Welcome to the Beaverton School District Board of Business Meeting until Monday, September 24th, 2018. Can I please ask everybody to put their cellphones on silence? And if you need to have a personal conversation, if you could just take those outside, we'd appreciate that. And this evening, we're very excited to have Sarah Cho from HS2 lead us into the pledge of allegiance.
Okay, I guess I'll do a cutoff on three. One, two, three.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we are going to recognize four, one, two, three, four young women if they will come up. Sarah Cho, Tara Martinez, Naomi Thomas, and Nova Leonard. Go ahead and come on up. Health and Science School students Sarah, Tara, Naomi, and Nova won first place in the Safe Oregon PSA and hashtag contest. The students were tasked with creating a public service announcement video that encourages viewers to use Safe Oregon to share confidential information about threat or a potential threat to student safety. Examples include safety threats, violence, threats of violence, fights, drugs, alcohol, weapons, bullying, friends talking about hurting themselves, harassment, intimidation, cyberbullying, or self-harm. The PSA is intended for use online in the community and in schools to assist with outreach. The team will receive $1,000 for their video on cyberbullying. Congratulations, Sarah, Tara, Naomi, and Nova.
Oh, hello. So, well, the way, okay, so funny story, the way how this video came to be. So, basically, we had a PE assignment where we were gonna make a short film. And our PE teacher was like, alright guys, this is gonna be really casual, you can use your phone cameras. But, you know, we're a pretty awesome group of overachievers and professionals. So we were like, hey, let's go ask Mr. Edgar for fancy cameras and shoot a really cool video. So it was pretty awesome because we did it in two days and about five hours. So it was really cool that we came out with a high-quality video in that short amount of time. And I was just lucky that we came up with a really cool idea at midnight when I was writing. So, yeah, thank you so much. I hope this PSA affects people around to see it.
I understand that we have somebody from Safe Oregon here to present the check. Is that correct? I was just told. Yes? Okay, come on up.
So I should check, do we have a few minutes to say a couple words to Sarah? I promise to be brief. Thank you, is this better?
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Chair Tim Check, Superintendent Grodding, members of the board. For the record, my name is Dave Novotny and I work as the Superintendent of the Blind Education Service District. I'm appearing today as Vice Chair of the Oregon Task Force on school safety. And I'd like to share some brief information with you about the work of the task force and to recognize the first-place student winners of the Safe Oregon Public Service Announcement Contest. With me today, I have several people that I'd like to introduce very briefly. Standing in the back, we have Captain Tim Fox from Oregon State Police, Wendy Landers, Director of Central Records, Oregon State Police, Wendy Oversees, Safe Oregon, our statewide school safety tip line, Dominique Mallett, a program analyst 2 with Oregon State Police. Dominique manages the day-to-day operations of Safe Oregon and is the contact person for all school districts and ESDs in the state if they wish to participate in the program. And then, of course, we have the famous Sergeant Kevin McDonald, Supervisor of the School Resource Officer Program with Beaverton Police Department. Sergeant McDonald has been actively involved with the task force since its inception and his insights have been extremely valuable to the group. First, I'd like to provide some very brief, high-level background information about the task force and Safe Oregon, just two minutes worth. The task force was created by the Oregon Legislature back in 2014 and is comprised of 16 members appointed by the governor. Members include teachers and classified staff, school administrators, a school board representative, law enforcement, fire officials, the governor's education and public safety advisors, and legislators from both the House and the Senate. One of the early recommendations coming out of the task force was for the state to establish a statewide school safety tip line to assist students and staff in reporting threats to student safety. In 2016, the legislature passed a bill and charged Oregon State Police with the task of implementing the tip line. By January of 2017, the state police launched Safe Oregon and its success has been absolutely phenomenal. The system allows students, staff, and others to report safety concerns anonymously via text message, telephone, web portal, or using an app on a smartphone. Safe Oregon is staffed and available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days out of the year. As of today, there were 1,057 schools signed up to use Safe Oregon and 1,754 tips have been reported thus far. I want to emphasize that Safe Oregon has made and continues to make a significant positive difference in the lives of Oregon students. And I have two, I think, very important examples to share with you. In November of 2017, a student called Safe Oregon and reported a concern about a friend who indicated intent to commit suicide. Two local police officers responded to the friend's home and ultimately forced their way into the bedroom where they found the youth unconscious and not breathing with a belt wrapped tightly around his neck. The police officers began CPR and luckily, the youth began breathing on his own. This was an incredibly close call and things probably would have turned out differently if Safe Oregon had not been implemented. Last February, as many of you may have heard, there was a high-profile case that was featured prominently in the local media. A Safe Oregon tip led the state police to a former college student, Corvallis, who was arrested for tweeting threats about killing people at Oregon State University. In this case, Safe Oregon obviously played a critical role in protecting students at OSU. And of course, I could share numerous other examples if time permitted. I want you to know that the men and women of the Oregon State Police are incredibly dedicated to this effort. Most people don't know this, but Travis Hampton, Superintendent of Oregon State Police, is personally notified of all critical Safe Oregon tips. We believe it's reassuring for people to know that the chief law enforcement officer for the state takes a personal interest in making sure schools are safe places for students and staff. I would like to thank the Beaverton School District for your leadership in implementing Safe Oregon in your district. I would also like to thank Sergeant McDonald specifically for his good work in promoting the tip line. I saw a television news report last month featuring the sergeant related to your district including information about Safe Oregon on the back of student ID cards. We greatly appreciate your support. Most importantly, however, this evening, I would like to recognize several students from the Health and Science School who committed their time, talents, and energy to create an outstanding video promoting student use of Safe Oregon. The individuals have already been introduced, but I am very proud of the work that they have done. What I would like to say to your students is I would like to thank you for your commitment to promote Safe Oregon and your desire to make a positive difference in the lives of students across our state. I have no doubt your work will help improve the safety of our schools and may even result in a success story much like the ones I shared earlier. Thank you for your excellent work. And I would also like to recognize your teacher, Mr. Agard. Thank you. And also Principal Andrew Kronk. And we have an oversized check that we would like to present to your students. Thank you once again for your support of Safe Oregon.
Well, that was a great treat and congratulations. And I feel very safe in this room now. Thank you for all you do. Now, are we ready for our superintendent comments? Oh, public participation first, there we go. Oh, it was a Freudian slip, wasn't it? No, we're ready. For those of you that would like to participate in our public participation, we have yellow cards that you fill out. We have about five folks to present to us, so we'll have about three minutes to speak. And if you have any additional information that you'd like to share with the board, I encourage you to share it with Candace, our recording secretary, so that we can get that information later. So first off is, up is Sarah Schmidt from the EA.
Good evening, Chair Tim Check, Superintendent Grodding, and members of the board. I was planning to say something really brief this evening. And then before I left my office, I got an email from a teacher that I used to work with that was incredibly compelling. So I immediately asked for her permission to share it. So what I have is to share with you. Generally, what I'd like to communicate is that you are in a very important position in our district. And I know that I have brought comments to you a number of times about concerns about student success and disruptive learning in our schools. So I thought that I could give someone else's voice a chance here. So here's what she says. "I'm writing in this email to express my concern about the number of impacted students we have in kindergarten and the support from special services. This is not a reflection of the sped staff in our building but of our system for identifying and getting help for the students who need it. The past few years, the kindergarten teachers in my building and other teachers we talk with have noticed that students are coming to school needing more support than they have in the past. I've been teaching for 25 years." And side note, she is an incredibly phenomenal teacher. "And students' behavioral skills have decreased steadily. As teachers, we spend more and more time teaching basic behavior and communication skills at the beginning of the year than we used to. We have also seen a rise in students with communication disorders such as autism and students on various levels of this spectrum. As a district, we don't have a system set up to help these students to be successful within the general education setting and in a timely manner. This is the first time that I have thought about finding another job outside of education, considering that I couldn't possibly do this for much longer. We've got to figure out a better way to take care of students, teachers, and the administrators. When the environment is not right for our students to succeed, everyone suffers. There need to be more services for students who don't fit into the general education system so that teachers and administrators are not running out on a career we so badly need to fill. This system is broken and I need and want to find a way to help. And I know that this is not a new message to you and that you all have this very much on your radar and that it is also an issue about resources. But what I'm starting to notice is that we have teachers who are coming forward saying, "I'm completely exhausted. I cannot meet the needs of my students nor is our system equipped to meet the needs of our students." And they're wanting to do something to help. So that last piece, I think, is the most important component. And I'm hoping that we can work together and come up with some solutions that are really going to help. So I hope that that's not too doom and gloom. I just, I think it's important to hear those voices. And then to have a little bit of a positive note, I had the incredible opportunity last week to go to a two-day resorted practices training that was put on by our TOSSAs in the counseling department. And it was incredibly inspiring and I think we were really on to something by starting to implement that in our district. And we have some incredibly talented teachers who are going through that training as well. So it's a great spot, so, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah, I appreciate it. Next up is Lynn Wetry and after that is Kathy Demille.
Push, it says. Hi Chair Tim Check, board members, and Superintendent Grodding. Welcome to another sunny fall day, it's pretty awesome. Number one, I'd like to say, please note, Walk and Back to School Day is coming up, it's October 10th. The two media schools that we've selected are, and not just me, our team, Bose Elementary and West Walton View. So Bose is the city school and West TV is the county school. We'll be inviting, doing a formal invitation to all of you to attend and also the meeting. We're hoping this weather holds out till then, sure. I'd like to say some of the work that we've been doing for back to school. I want to do a big shout-out to Fir Grove Elementary School. The PE teacher, Leslie Vegas, and Principal Erin Miles supported a series of four community walks. We probably had about 300 families walking around the Fir Grove neighborhood, starting with a little bit of pedestrian safety and going for a fun walk. It's fun to hear kids walking past their house and going, "Hey, that's my house, I can walk to school." It's pretty neat. And, but we've also been doing a bunch of training for walking school buses in preparation for Walk and Back to School Day. A big shout-out as well to Beth in the elementary school and the PE teacher there. We were able to teach pedestrian, basic pedestrian and bicycle safety to all PE classes. So every single one of the kids have basic skills so they can feel confident walking and biking to school as well. And also to Almonica, Cynthia Lanmoffett, and Melody Zimmer. Welcome families to Almonica with a new walking school bus route from the neighborhood to school along a new route where they, where we had, I think there were about 25 people participating and all pretty excited to do it. Last but not least, I'd like to thank the crossing guards that are crossing our kids every single day. There are 156 crossing guards and, sorry, from a survey, 150 crossing guards reported crossing 13,252 students. And thank you for them for keeping our kids safe. Thank you.
Thanks Lynn. Kathy? And after that will be Stacy Lehmert.
Good evening. We all recognize the crucial role of service animals in our society. They lead the blind, comfort the disabled, and perform a litany of tasks for their owners. These animals are enshrined in federal law under the American with Disabilities Act and may accompany their owners without restriction. Another category exists known as therapy animals. Unfortunately, these particular animals are lumped into a category along with unregulated emotional support animals that require no training or certification. This is the case with the Beaverton School District policy titled Animals in District Facility. Many schools choose not to allow non-ADA-approved animals on premises due to perceived risks or concerns about sanitation, suitability of temperament, or liability when working with children. However, therapy animals and their handlers are carefully selected and put through a strict testing regime prior to acceptance into the program. They require an examination by a veterinarian, proof of all required vaccinations, as well as to be groomed for every visit. They also must register with a nationally-recognized program. The one I'm certified through also carries $2 million in liability insurance. As a certified handler and part of a team with my doc Jaeger, I have witnessed firsthand the positive impact he has on the schools and hospitals we visit. Hospitals invite us into the intensive care units to visit patients and their families coping with difficult situations. Concerns about students' mental health and wellness are on the rise. Unlike their parents and grandparents, students today harbor legitimate concerns that their schools are not as safe as they once were. At a low high school, we have even opened a wellness center so students have a safe place to cope with an emotional crisis, cases of anxiety or depression. At our research a few weeks ago, a TOSSA spoke to us. She is in a new position to recognize, to address social-emotional learning in Beaverton School District. It is obvious this district recognizes the change in emotional strength and mental health of our students and staff. A therapy animal can diffuse a situation better than any tool we have and I believe our students and staff can greatly benefit from such a tool. A student in crisis that encounters the unconditional acceptance of a therapy animal will react immediately to his presence. I have seen it many times. They possess a specific demeanor and temperament, one that is the very basis for their acceptance into the program. It cannot be taught, something that makes it even more special. Our students are our future. Their mental, sorry. Their mental well-being is fundamental and they deserve every single tool we as a society can bring into their lives. Therapy animals can fulfill the purpose in a safe and appropriate manner and make a meaningful, positive impact on our students. I believe we can work together to craft an amended service animal policy and I am committed to assisting this effort in any way I can. I'm also crafting a bill to be presented at legislative session in February so that students and staff statewide can have access to these amazing animals.
Thank you so much Kathy, thanks for bringing your special guest, Andrew. Later night. Stacy Lehmert. And after that will be Kevin O'Donnell.
Good evening, Chair Tim Check, board members, and Superintendent Grodding. My name is Stacy Wainwright, parent of two Sunset High School students. I'm here tonight to ask for your support for adding pedestrian-activated flashing lights to the mid-block crosswalk in front of Sunset High School. After years of stories of near misses and close calls at this crosswalk and of community letter writing requesting safety improvements, sadly, earlier this month, a student was hit and injured in this crosswalk on September 4th. Since the accident, we understand that funding may become available for adding flashing lights here. And we thank those who have been gathering data and working to push this project forward. Our request of you, the board, please support the, number one, please support the expeditious placement of pedestrian-activated flashing lights at this crosswalk. Please, number two, both ensure that a representative is identified who can answer questions as the project proceeds and also ensure that the district publicly shares a project plan and timeline for the safety upgrade to try to minimize questions and uncertainty for the community. And three, if funding for this project becomes a limiting factor, please share this as well so that the community can get to work to install these flashing lights. We now can look to the example of Bethany Elementary PTO, which in 2017 installed flashing lights at a school crosswalk in nine months, from PTO meeting to finish. Now, just to be clear, we aren't at all sure that such fundraising and construction efforts should be the responsibility of a school's PTO or of a busy school principal or of community groups. Still, if the district or the county aren't planning on moving forward, please let the public know so that the community can step in. To sum up, the Sunset community is determined to see that this crosswalk is improved with flashing lights as soon as possible. We ask for your support for the project and for a clear, shared plan and timeline for installing these lights with the hope that this effort, cheered by the concerned community, will allow us to prevent more accidents. Thank you.
Thank you Stacy. Next Kevin O'Donnell.
Good evening, hello. Mine's Kevin O'Donnell. And mine is an add-on to what Stacy just brought to you. I did submit a letter around this that's in your packet as well. And mine is around taking what happened at Sunset High School and brought it across the whole school district. My request is to improve safety improvements to active transportation, just as Beaverton School District does for busing transportation. The Sunset High School student that was hit there, I heard was lucky. What happened there was during a cross-country practice that her head cracked the windshield of a VW Bug. It was not hit by a SUV or something like that. And so my ask is, in the active transportation, and active transportation could be anything in that last mile to school where we don't have bus routes. And I know Safe Route to School does a great job coordinating the volunteer effort. But my ask here today is to have Beaverton School District centrally locate these needs when they come up to Bethany Elementary, Almonica, wherever it is. And then, once these issues become known, they prioritize them, they push them, they drive them. They ask for funding where they need it. As a way of comparison, when a school bus needs a safety improvement or needs replaced, it just happens. BSD takes care of that. There is no need for community nagging and pushing for these safety improvements when we're trying to get students that last mile safely to school. Compounding that land use and transportation work is very difficult. As a community-involved person for the last 10 years, I know it, I've been trying, in this intersection of Sunset High School, I tried to push it through, working through Washington County, talking to the school district, and I just couldn't get it. And in the end, what happened was, I got this. I got Washington County, say, talking to BSD, BSD talked to Washington County. And so I know you guys have the City of Beaverton to work with, some places Almonica County. This is why I ask BSD to control this, centrally maintain it, and manage it with community input and stakeholders like Safe Route to School. So in closing, I please, I ask you to please expand the safety rigor that BSD provides to school, to school buses, to active transportation. And then I'd like to close that, on a personal note, after that accident happened, I found out that, we heard how the community rallied, we have funds, there's action. I actually know that student, I know her family. And I saw her a week ago and I was tremendously guilty because I've been working on this for the last year, last couple of years. And I felt real guilty. And she came up to me and she takes off her headbandage and shows this huge head wound. And I expected her to ask me why, why not fast her? And what she did, and speaks to the quality of the person, the student, she thanked me and asked me, "Let me know what I can do to help you stop this in the future." So I'm asking you to do the same thing across your school district. What can you do to stop this kind of stuff happening in the future? Because she could have got killed. Thank you.
Thank you Kevin. Are there any other folks that would like to speak? Board members, just to keep you on your feet, do any of you have any changes to the agenda at this time? Thank you. Now, Superintendent Grodding.
Thank you ma'am chair. Several things happening. And just on the last subject, just to let folks know that Deputy Superintendent Lee has been working with the county and we have procured funding. The project is a go. And right now, we're just waiting for the county to develop its plan. We're gonna sign an MOU, but all of the funding has been procured. And Carl, I know this, anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, so it's not just, so funding is obviously a factor. It's making sure the MOU, we would ideally like the county to steer this. They know the codes, they know the permitting requirements to be able to help drive this. And we believe it'll actually expedite it exactly as what Stacy was talking about in terms of timeline. So we're hoping that that can happen in a pretty quick fashion. Definitely be able to meet the objectives if you identify it. And we'll certainly do that back through John and he can advertise that and put that information out to the Sunset community.
Thank you for coming. Right now, there's just several entities that we're really focused on revenue reform. And we, our board members, had a regional meeting in which our president of the OSBA board, Leanne Larson, was there. And so FOSBA is working on this, OEA is working on it, several folks. And really trying to work with our legislature to inform them that we do need more dollars. we do need more dollars. I think we just heard passionately about some of the social-emotional issues that our staff and are dealing with, but it's not only our staff, I think, it's also helping the families of these students also. So, there is going to be some significant ask at the legislative level, and, but it's going to take all of us to come up, and we just have to have a collective impact when we're talking to legislators, asking them to, for some revenue reform. Right now, tentatively, we believe that in order to just offer the same, exactly the same services here in the Beaverton School District without any type of investment, we need to get that number somewhere at 9.4, but that's with no investments. We need to make some investments in the area of social-emotional well-being, as well as several other areas. So, anything that, I know our board's engaged, our staff's engaged, and several of our organizations, but it's really going to behoove us all to hold our legislators' feet to the fire. We need some more money for education. And part of that has to do with the significant increase that we're going to see in peers, not only school districts, but a lot of other public entities. So, there could be some other services lost that will impact, impact our kids also. Tomorrow night, I'm actually going down to testify before the Joint Committee on Student Success, and being able to talk to them about some of the challenges that we're having in our schools, all the way from social-emotional resources that we need to bring to the table. We've talked about diversifying our workforce so that our teachers and staff more reflect the populations, our student populations, early childhood education, anything that we can do to get our students and their families on a fair trajectory to seeing success. We're also going to be talking about some of the housing efforts that are underway and the need for, for housing. As far as the Beaverton School District, our enrollment is relatively flat. We're not seeing any significant increases. However, the one thing we are seeing is a loss of students who are students of poverty, and some of our second-language students. We are down about 400, we're still down about 400 students from our projections. And along, as our poverty drops, as will some of the federal grant money that comes in to support those students. We talked about meeting. Board member Larson and myself, and David Williams, met with the Portland Business Alliance along with several other key business communicators. Tim Nesbitt was there, and talking about revenue reform, as well as some cost containment. That was our first initial meeting. We have another meeting planned to see if we can really come up with some ideas to raise and increase some revenue, as well as looking at some different cost containment issues that can help, that can help us in the long run. Sarah mentioned, you know, some of the behaviors that we're starting to see in our school, not starting to see, I think we've seen them for a while, I think they're just becoming more intense. And I know on October 9th, from 4:30 to 6 o'clock at Meadow Park School, the Department of Education, Deputy Superintendent Colt-Gill will be there, and they will be talking about some of the disruptive behaviors that are taking place in our schools, and the need to provide some more resources. A more positive note, just want to let board members and community members know, in the last six months, as you know, extracurricular activities are a big part of what our students do, and how they participate, and their behaviors in those activities means a lot to us. So, the OSAA, they choose various teams based on evaluations from referees and umpires regarding sportsmanship. So, whether it's not about winning or losing, it's how you're conducting yourself on the, on the field of play. And so, in the last six months, just to let you know, we've been contacted that Southridge Football has been awarded, Sunset Softball, Beaverton Softball, Aloha Softball, Westview Volleyball, and Sunset Volleyball have been selected as teams that have showed great character on the field. So, that's exciting. Talked about Crosswalk, we have that, that financing going in, and we just had a really great start to the school year. Yes, we have many challenges, but approximately 40,000 students are being educated every day, and we're providing as safe an environment as possible with the resources that we currently have. So, it's been a great start to the school year, and just in talking with other school districts, they're seeing those, we all have some of the same issues that revolve around social-emotional wellness for our students, and enrollments are dropping, where housing is, is becoming less affordable for our parents, and so, those families are moving either extremely south or extremely west of us. And that's, that's an issue. We're trying to work on that. I know we've been in contact with the city and the county, trying to find ways that we can look into some affordable housing issues, as well as our, some of our second-language students, making sure that we can provide them with some other services for their families. That's all I have.
And board members, I failed to mention your packet that you received on Thursday, and the packet that you have here tonight, that we have pulled the proclamation for attendance at, for a later time. Now, we're going to hear from our school reports, and we're glad to have our principals here with us tonight. And first up is Kristin Lamont from Cooper Mountain Elementary.
Thank you. The school board, I want to say a special thank you to David Williams for helping me organize and plan for the event. I believe I was the test case, so we'll talk later and see how he did. I am delighted to be able to talk about Cooper Mountain, and you have asked me to talk about successes, obstacles, and our action plan, which is multifaceted. Successes, we, I want to echo what Dawn just said, we've had a really nice start to the year, partly because of some planning we did last spring in response to what we see on the template in front of you. But after our back-to-school night, which was upbeat and very well-attended, I walked out an hour after people should have gone home, and parents were still out talking, enjoying the community and the beautiful weather, and the comments were, wow, you have great teachers, my child is so happy here. And they are happy. And parents, we have quite a bit of support from parents. You see that 90% of the parents reported they feel informed and included in the school culture, and I think that's a pretty high mark. Do I want it to be higher? Absolutely. But 90%, almost 90% of our students recognize and acknowledge that they feel cared for. Of course, that should be 100%, because we care for every one of them. So, these are goals we have. We are happy to see that as students move through the grades, that the scores go up, especially in fifth-grade English Language Arts. And if you notice, our girls just rocked it. And we're just wondering, what happened with girls in fifth grade that they went up 10% in, and 10% in, actually about 14% in math, contrary to third grade, where they dropped a little bit? So, we have questions, and now I'm going to kind of back into what are our challenges? We are aware that even with some things going very well, what doesn't show up on this template is, through the ESAB Accountability Report, our ELs earned a four in growth, and we worked hard with our EL students. Our economically disadvantaged students made substantial growth, and our multiracial students made substantial growth, earning fours in areas, actually, in achievement. So, we know that our data is not where it should be. We recognize that, and we're wondering why? Because they're exhibiting learning in the classroom, through their classroom assessments, their classroom projects, and by teachers grading and reporting, our students are learning. What is it that's getting in the way of this ESAB? So, things that we have put in place this year that we feel like are going to make a difference. We concentrated on very clear expectations, procedures, and routines, and that came out of our cell work last year. We had a cohort of students in third grade last year that impacted the learning in two of the four classrooms significantly, and we believe that's somewhat we're seeing here. We strategically moved those students to where we thought they would be successful. In fourth grade, knowing what we know about them, we were able to place them carefully. We also made some staffing changes to bring expertise and strengths to different teams of teachers, so that we can learn from each other in new ways. If we had primary expertise, some of those people moved up a little bit to help with early literacy learning. We aligned our schedule so that there's less pullout, and when there is pullout, they're getting double the, the teaching and instruction from the classroom teacher, who knows them better. We're also being really proactive earlier in the year at looking at data. We have our first event in just a week and a half, where teachers will present every single student, where do they feel like they are, so that we can support early and more often through the course of the school year. Part of our challenge last year, and I'm sure it was true in other buildings as well, was coming to grips with substantial changes in curriculum, and a new way, newer way of really going about effective instruction. And during collaboration times, I know my teachers spent a substantial amount of time just familiarizing themselves. Where can they meet the standards through that curriculum? Because it's a new, the workshop model is a new methodology, and I, now that we're more familiar, I'm confident that we will find ways to increase growth and increase learning through that curriculum and meet the standards. We're also organizing and responding with professional development. Just took a survey of our teachers, how comfortable are you feeling with units of study and reading and writing, and with the context for learning, all workshop approaches, that really takes a lot of teacher familiarity and expertise, and how can we meet those needs? So, another kind of conundrum is, we had pockets of excellence that you don't see in holistic data. So, some third-grade classes that outperformed others, fifth-grade classes that outperformed others. How can we really open up our practice so that all teachers are learning from that? Because there are answers in the building. There's expertise and a great deal of knowledge. So, that's the leadership moves I want to make with our teams, is really capitalizing on successes, so that all certain students can benefit from that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Board members, do you have any questions? Dawn?
Well, it's nice seeing you. I'm sorry, I'm no longer your board member, but it was a pleasure.
I miss you, but we have Becky.
And we have Becky, so. So, anyway, I liked what I heard when you said that you're asking the students to sort of talk to you about where they think they are in relation to their, their learning. I'm sure that does a lot. So, I'm just wondering if you could talk a little bit more about that and the relationship with the parent's role? Because I'm assuming you are sharing this information with the parent, you know, where the student thinks he is, which is where they are in reality, and how they are helping you move the student forward. That's just one question.
Excellent one. One component, one vital component of units of study, which are excellent resources, is that students have goals and they know what they are. And that is something that was not widespread in, across Cooper Mountain. That came out in student survey. Some of them expressed, yep, they know what they are, and others did not. And I know that as I'm visiting classrooms, that's the question I ask, what are you working on? How do you know if you're successful? And a lot of times, everybody's on, and sometimes it's a little more confusing. So, that's something that's going to become more transparent and in the forefront of what we do.
And then my second question, this has to do with the success coaches. I know all the schools have been saying they just love them, so how are you utilizing them?
Half-time, can't hint. We use her extensively. We had a fabulous student success coach last year that we shared with Sexton Mountain. She went on to become an RTI coach with Tiger Twolletton. So, we are starting over, but we have an outstanding individual that is completely invested and has many years also looking at data, and with student work and intervention. So, I think she's going to be a beautiful match. Of course, we've hardly seen her because the training, the upfront training is intense. Another move that we made, kind of in correlation with that, is a new person in the intervention position that is very strong with data, because I believe that's something we can improve on, school-wide, is really knowing how to look at it, and how to address it, and how to strategize around it.
Well, thank you, and again, it's great seeing you.
Thank you, Dawn.
Thank you so much for presenting to us, and what I wanted to, thank you for presenting other data out there that shows how strong you are and some of your population. So, thank you for bringing in the ESAB statistics. So, my question is about the ESAB and attendance, because I noticed that it's 65%. And so, do you see a possibility of a correlation between the test scores and the fact that there's a lot of kids missing more than 10 days?
I would suspect that that's true. That's, I mean, that's research-based. The more you're there, the more you learn. I have not gone back to look at where the 35% are, what grade levels they're in, although I'm not sure it would, well, it would matter for last year. So, that I can't answer with much accuracy, but it is something that we're being proactive about this year. We are celebrating it, perfect and excellent attendance every month, and keeping that in the forefront, where we're trying to respond to that in a positive way, not a punitive way.
Another question is not related to that, but it's about, you were talking about the new curriculum last year, and kind of ramping that up. Was that in particular the math curriculum, or was, okay?
Math was predominantly the planning that teachers did on Wednesdays. Yep. I looked at the agendas every week.
Thank you.
We're getting there.
I know. And do you think that you're ahead of the curves, or do you think there's still some learning to go on the math?
There's a lot of learning yet to go. We're not ahead of the curve. I was, I was listening to NPR the other day, and it sounds like statewide, math scores dropped. We at least stayed even, so I'll count that as a win, right?
Kind of a follow-up to Susan's first question. What are some of the challenges for kids in terms of attendance, right, with that 35%? What are some of the reasons they're not coming to school?
We have many, because I make phone calls. Several of our families take their children out. We had several, and sometimes it's for a beautiful reason. Their homes are in Japan, or their homes are abroad, and several went for a month or two or three weeks, or vacations. Some are truly sick. We had a pretty bad epidemic of a couple things last year, and some just, I think, just aren't there. It's a, it's a plethora of reasons.
Are there any techniques you think that are kind of turning that ship around?
You know, and that's something, that's a great question, too. That's something we really were strategic about starting this year, because that's a significant dip from the past, is informing parents, what's happening at 8:30? Because some are coming in late as well, we have kind of a chronic tardiness problem. But what's happening each and every day, really trying to keep parents informed about what's being taught, what's being missed, and also just building those relational bridges in a positive way before we even talk about attendance, just how important or how much they enjoy having a child in class, and that they're a part of the community. We haven't found a silver bullet yet, but we're, we keep trying.
I was interested in your comment that you're trying to adjust your schedule so that there's less pullout for students, and I was just wondering if you could give us a little bit more of an idea about what that looks like at Cooper Mountain. If I was a student there, how would it be different?
I'm thinking reading workshop, for instance. We crafted a schedule that allows every student to remain in the classroom for the mini lesson, which is the teaching point. It's one isolated skill or big idea, even sometimes that lasts 10 to 15 minutes. There is room in the schedule for students to stay in the classroom for that, and to work with their teacher in a small group or conferring before they go to the resource room or to intervention. That was something that is new. That was something that is new, that we tried really hard to put into place. Is that yet at the heart of your question?
Absolutely, it does. Thank you.
Liam?
Hi. I wanted to ask you, you have 90% of your parents feel involved in, so I was wondering, what specifically have you been doing across your school to help parents feel? Have you had special programs, invitations? Anything that you can point to that would say that helped bump us up? Because 90% is pretty high.
And actually, in one of the surveys, it was higher than that. It was like 95, and I don't remember which one that was. I think I've worked, I have a really wonderful PTO. It's not me, it's them. And we've worked closely to create a theme of community and just create all kinds of events for families to come, just to be together, and very proactive communication, sharing what we do on Early Release Wednesdays, encouraging teachers to communicate frequently, even if it's just little touches. I think all those things have helped, but the theme of community, I think, is a big one.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Kristin, I just want to say, first of all, I've attended your PTO meetings, and I do know you have a very active PTO. And I want to acknowledge what a great job you've done in collaborating and problem-solving as you've had concerns with parents, and you've been very good at problem-solving and working with the district and coming together to get fencing put up. So congratulations to you for doing that. And also, I want to thank you for including me in one of your early release and allowing me to participate for two hours with your teachers and with your staff, and that was really great. And for me to see firsthand as a board member, the things that you're putting, and I really appreciate your concise report and the great job you did this evening. So kudos to your staff.
Thank you, Becky. And I hope you'll come back for another early release. Yeah. Okay.
Thank you, David.
Thank you. Great job. One of the things for board members that she, when she said hint, hint, so with some of our schools, they only are receiving a half-time student success coach, and that student success coach is actually serving two schools. And so, you talk about developing that sense of community within the school, that kind of detracts from that, and it's simply a resource issue. We would, I would like to be able to put two of those student success coaches in our, some of our larger schools that have more challenging issues that come up. Some of our title schools that are, that are just hopping out of the, you know, the walls with kids and everything because they need that. And then the other thing, we're starting to hear from our middle schools now that they need that same resource. Kids don't automatically become well after the, when they go to the 6th grade, and we're seeing lots of these type of same issues from the 6th to 8th grade. And they need those exact same resources, too. So, but some of the schools with half-time, they lose a lot. There's some windshield time being lost there, but it's strictly just a, it's a resource issue.
Thank you for coming tonight. Okay, next up is El Monica Elementary School in Sibley, LA. Okay.
Good evening. I am bringing up my assistant principal, Melinda Zimmer. If it weren't for her, I literally would not be here right now. So I want to share about El Monica. We are a, we are now at 760-ish students. We're a Title I school. We are one of a small handful of Title I IB schools in the state of Oregon. So we're really proud of that. Niche.com says that we are the most diverse public elementary school in the state of Oregon, so that's kind of cool. We definitely pride ourselves on diversity, both in staff and student population. Some of our successes in recent years, our staff is amazing. We have staff who are working extremely hard to learn our reading curriculum, our writing curriculum, our math adoption, our, the units that we have to write from scratch as a PYP school. Our staff are on board. We are not finding resistance to that. It's just a matter of refinement and finding expertise in learning new curriculum every year. One example of how staff works together, the first Wednesday of school, we were allotted an extra teacher because we have 150 kindergartners. So we were allotted a sixth teacher who we hired immediately. The following Thursday was back-to-school night. On our staff, we acquired some cubicle walls from a recycling plant that Intel had tossed. One of our teacher's dad owns a recycling plant, so we got a bunch of cubicle walls. Somewhere between 7:00 AM when they dropped off the walls and 6:00 PM when back-to-school night happened, we put a classroom together in the middle of Kindy Commons with decoration, and we, you know, swapped out the kindergarten chairs for the adult chairs. We had tables like lowered to kindergarten size, like beautiful posters up. This teacher like went all out, sweaty, you know, wiped off, like went to the bathroom, wiped off the sweat, put on some lip gloss, and like greeted parents like three minutes later. This is the staff that we have. They work together. The PE teacher came down and moved cubicle walls. Like we, like, it's an amazing staff. And this is what collaboration looks like for curriculum on Wednesdays. Like they, they will go, we are not worried about making sure that you collaborate for 90 minutes because they'll be there till 5 o'clock. And at some point, there are a few staff members where I walk around and go, hey, does your husband know that you, you know, you need to be home for dinner? Like let's, you know, work-life balance, let's go. Staff is absolutely amazing. Our PTO is awesome. They completely get the idea of social justice, our PTO. They have started a community resource fund or a family assistance fund. They put in money every month. They buy jackets and shoes and food, and we, the partner with the church, and we have food backpack program going to families who need it. They don't ask for names. They, you know, they ask for no information other than like, do we have enough size eight jackets right now? And our, our PTO does the fundraising, and they take care of a lot of that for us. Our Kindy team is amazing. We currently have six students who aren't potty-trained yet, but hey, Writer's Workshop is happening. Reader's Workshop is happening. Everyone has a book bin with books at their level. There, there's literacy and math and science and social studies going on. Kids might not all know how to use the bathroom, but, but we're, you know, we're going for it, and they're, they're going to be reading at the end of the, at the end of the school year. So, great, you know, a great amount of success. Challenges, a lot. We, we, we all feel like the effort we put in was not what we see on our SBAK scores. There were a few tears shed in the spring when we started looking at the data coming in. And immediately, two of my EL teachers immediately went to a training and said, we, we got to do something. So they signed up for the Penny Pavlala training, and, and it was very much targeted towards like, not how to take the test, but what are the look-for's in SBAK? We, we need to do something. So they took that training before the official scores came back, already met with the team, and again, met with the intervention team at the beginning of this school year. A 5th grade team took a look at the scores and, and said, we're going to interview students one by one. So we went and we interviewed students, and, and this is kind, like, like I want to cry. It's so good and bad at the same time. Last year was our first year as a, as an authorized IB school, so it was our first year in exhibition. Exhibition is, I don't know, do you all know about IB exhibition? Like you explore a topic that you're passionate about, and you go 100% and learn about it and present on it and advocate for it. Students articulated to us that they wanted to get done with SBAK so they could go back to our exhibition, which is super heartwarming, but like, but dude, I need you to, but, but I needed you to get a three on that test. I didn't say that, but in my head, that's, that's what I have in my head, like. So, so we, we know to maybe schedule things a little bit differently this year. Our formative assessment data in, both in math and in reading shows a much higher level of proficiency than what we see on SBAK. So we know it's there. A fair number of students in 4th grade, they were scoring fours, and 5th grade, they're scoring ones and twos. That, like, that's not making sense to us. Something was happening. So we, we actually spent most of May and June kind of mulling over what, what, what we can do about that, what, what could make the change for us and how we can calm kids down this year.
Do I have a statement? Sure. I just also want to say how thankful I am for our teachers and how much they have embraced the social, emotional learning. When we polled them at the beginning of last year, that was their number-one request for training and growth so that they could serve all students better. And the amount of time and energy that they've put into reframing their classroom, especially around routines and rituals, and making all of our students feel safe and secure and ready for success is something that I really think should be commended.
Thank you, folks. Questions? Donna?
Hello, welcome. It's really nice seeing you. I'm so happy you're here before us tonight. I just have a couple of questions. Guess the first one, I wanted to congratulate you on the reduction of your students missing class due to suspensions or expulsions, and also the number of days, class days missed due to them as well. And I was wondering if you could speak to how you're able to achieve that reduction? Because you went from, for one statistic, 32.5 to 8.5. That's pretty huge in a year. What, did you do that was different?
I actually had questions about that statistic. Because I, we went back and looked, I don't, I, that is not something that I recall, suspending 15 kids for 32 days.
So are you saying that that's too much, or?
Yeah, that, that was way too much. Like that, that was, yes.
Okay. Well, then, how about, I just wanted to, I know there's been some change. It looks like there are more students who are missing fewer than 10 days of school. So I was wondering if you could speak to that?
We looked at that, and I was, I was looking at that as, as Kristin was, as you guys were asking Kristin that same question. And we do have a lot of international families, and honestly, airfare is much cheaper certain times of year than if you just go the two weeks of, of winter break. So there, we do have a significant number of, of students who fly, and we have a significant number of students who drive back to Mexico. And when, if you're going to drive that long, you're going to stay for weeks at a time. But for the students who are here and not traveling, we have a variety of intervention strategies that we try depending on the kid. The EXACT sent out a pretty awesome article a couple weeks back about the most effective attendance practices, and it's really about developing the relationship with the kid, developing strong relationships with kids so that they want to come to school as opposed to making the parents feel bad for not sending their kids to school. So we're, we're tightening up our social, emotional learning, helping teachers learn to build relationships with the kids who are hardest to build relationships with, and then working with families and seeing what we can do to support.
I guess I'll end on a positive note. Looks like there's been improvements in how students feel about the school, how parents feel, and how staff feels. So I was wondering, obviously, a lot of good things are going on, and you talked about your staff and their caring nature, all the things that they're doing. So congratulations on that. And do you have any ideas of what you're doing that might be different? That's, that's been improved, the feelings of folks regarding their working environment and how students feel about the school?
Honestly, I just think we have amazing staff because our students are getting easier. We're, we're having more challenges than we had two years ago when we thought we were having challenges with students. So it, I think it speaks a lot about the staff's integrity and the staff's commitment to kids, that they feel very supported. We do what we think is best, and we just hope that staff respond to it and that parents respond to it.
Susan?
Well, thank you for presenting. I always know it's kind of intimidating, even though I don't think we're intimidating. I know what the feeling is intimidating. Well, I have a few questions. One is I wanted to, I know that it must have been upsetting that the students didn't perform as well on the test, but to hear that they were so excited about a project they were doing, that it was still an educational experience, it probably expanded them in many, many ways, I think is a really positive. And I know it's painful in terms of the score, so I just wanted to comment on that. So I had a question earlier about the attendance impacting, I'm sure it's a, you know, similar answer, but the SBAK. So, you know, not only, you know, I just wanted to ask that question as well, and then I have one other question.
Yes. Attendance absolutely impacts SBAK. I don't care how proficient you are as a student, you're going to miss concepts, you're going to miss interaction. We're, we're no longer a system where you can send a packet home and say, do this, right? 98% of the learning is with the interaction during the school day and with bouncing ideas off of each other and with the cooperation between other humans. So if you're gone, you're, you're missing a ton.
So I have a question, so I have two questions. So one of them is like, if a student knows they're going to be gone because they've planned a trip to wherever, and this teacher knows that that student's going to be gone, is there some kind of pact? And I realize that they're still missing the in-class education, but they come, come with a packet to wherever they're going. I know, is that something that can happen? Is that potential? Is that like?
We, part of being, part of being in an IB school, and I think part of our, our curricular adoptions is kind of anti-packet, like, like it's the opposite of packet. We, we use a lot of paper, but we use a lot of blank paper, and the kids are creating things from scratch. They're, they're not only solving problems, they have to find what the problem is. So for a student to, to be, you know, gone at Disneyland for two days, that, that would still be very difficult to do. We, we had that, we had that question today from a kindergarten parent. Can, can you send me everything from August 27th to now? No?
What we're doing now so much is asking kids to explain their thinking and then learn from the mistakes and the successes in their thinking. That doesn't happen with a worksheet.
I was, I, it was just out of box question. And then, and the question goes back to, you mentioned there were like four kindergartners at, and I know you have like 100, did you say?
150.
150 kindergartners. So you think of percentage-wise, that's not so bad. But that is unusual for kids to be, not be potty-trained. But I know you also don't have the space, let's say, for a pre-K. But do you see that El Monica could be, if there was space, could you see El Monica being a candidate for pre-K?
My master's degree was in developmental psychology. I would love, like, can I just send 5th grade to Five Oaks? And we'll have pre-K of four. I, I, I would, yes, I would, I was absolutely welcome. We, we talk about it all the time, like what we could do to, it sounds like you have a need for it.
We absolutely have a need, and I joined the early childhood group last year specifically to see, knowing that we didn't have space even before we had our sixth classroom, what elements we can use even in our kindergarten classroom and our first grade, because if they didn't learn them in preschool, you really can't go on without them with any degree of success. So looking at how we implement them throughout the primary grades. We would love to have a preschool.
This may not be a fair question because it's, it's early in the school year, but I'm wondering, as you're building those relationships with parents, are you seeing attendance habits change? are you seeing attendance habits change?
We hope so. Um, we, we, I mean, we, we take a look early on at who, who might have missed a couple of days by now or who, um, might be at risk for, um, for having attendance issues. And we, we try to develop relationships with them preemptively. Um, we hope so. Any other questions?
I was interested, you know, I, I know when we, uh, when we look at our, our test scores that often we're unsatisfied. I think as a state, you know, it's, it's much bigger than Beaverton School District that we're not satisfied with the levels of achievement that we're able to feel confident that our students are achieving. Um, when I look at the data, one of the things I always find most interesting, especially because I know year to year, you know, we're dealing with a hundred kids, now two or three can really throw percentages. Um, so one of the things I always look at most closely is the cohort data that's available. Um, so in this example from Almonica, I was able to track third graders from two years ago to fifth graders in both English Language Arts and Math. And the thing about I found interesting about your results was that the results were divergent. Uh, the English Language Arts results were much higher than they had been in third grade a couple of years ago. And that the math results were much lower. And I was just curious if you had spent time talking as a staff about what might, you know, I guess I would hate to see that kind of continue is what I'll put out there. And so I'm just curious what is happening. It wasn't clear from the action plan what was happening to make sure that that wasn't a continuing trend.
Yeah.
We just worked on math, uh, in our staff meeting this last week. And we implemented a change so that we're addressing social emotional learning once a month, math once a month, and ELA once a month, and, and then kind of the things we have to do in a traditional staff meeting to try and balance some of that out. And I would say that pretty much across the board, our teachers struggled with the adoption of the math curriculum more than they did with workshop. It's a bigger mental shift, I think, to do math in the workshop model than it is for a lot of people to adopt it in the reading or writing. So we're offering, offering a lot more professional development. And, um, again, I don't think we're doing it to resistance. I think people, a lot of our staff are asking for help because they didn't feel as comfortable with that shift. And, and they want to be more comfortable now.
Mia?
I'd be curious to hear, um, how are your teachers using early release on Wednesdays?
Um, last week was week three, so almost every teacher went to, um, an off-site PD with the exception of the few teachers who, we, we hosted an early training. The week prior, I sat in with fifth grade. So there's, um, team collaboration. Um, I watched, um, fifth grade plan for a, um, an ecology unit. I learned what abiotic means. I didn't know what abiotic means. Um, and then I spent the week from Wednesday to Wednesday observing fifth grade classes. And so I got to see the planning that they did unfold. Um, and that's our, that's our, um, professional plan this year is to sit in on each grade level and then watch the, the planning that they do unfold. Um, and it was pretty awesome to watch, um, a truly integrated, uh, unit where they're learning, the Lucy Coughlin's unit on informational writing and research, but they're doing it in the context of their ecology unit in science and, um, and, and working with, um, like collaborative groups and, and, and researching what things mean and, and trying to categorize what's biotic and abiotic. So, um, uh, teams are taking full advantage of, of the Wednesdays. This Wednesday, we scheduled a PD, but, but, um, teachers are very clear about wanting to protect the ninety minutes. So we're scheduling our PD at three fifteen. So they will do their ninety minutes of collaboration. And then at three fifteen, we're gonna do a school pace refresher. Any other questions? We thank you both for being here this evening. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay. We look forward to, once a year, we get to hear from our charter schools. And first up is Arco Edus. We're gonna hear from Bob Kaminski. Did I say that correctly? And Krista Billings.
Hi, I'm Krista Billings. I'm the Arco Edus Board Chair. Um, I just wanna say a huge thank you to the Beaverton School District this year. As you know, we've had many ups and downs and challenges. And we could not have got our new building without the help and support of the school district and helping us submit our charter. When we had last minute issues of occupancy, we came to you and said we need help and you've offered us space at Whitford. And we just can't thank you enough for that. And I just really wanna say a special thank you to Paul Odenthal and John Bridges for breaking on that with us. We greatly value the relationship that we have with the district. Yeah, we've also launched our kindergarten program this year. So we're a full K through A program. And we'll be moving into our brand new building as long as everything goes on schedule as far as construction. We all know how that goes. Over spring break. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to our interim principal, Paul.
So I wanna, um, thank you, Board President Becky Timtjopkin, Superintendent Don Groding, and all the members of the Executive Committee and the Board of Directors for inviting us down. Arco Edus is in its ninth year as a public charter school, and I feel a great honor to be working there. You probably haven't met me, so just a quick little snapshot about me. I was a charter school principal in Eugene at the Village School, a Waldorf-inspired charter school. I was there for four years. And, uh, prior to that, I was a administrator in San Lorenzo, California. I was a principal, uh, for six years and at the same school as a vice principal, then I moved up to principal. And, um, then, um, before that, I have some experience as a teacher, classroom teacher, mostly fifth grade, also English as a second language teacher. Um, and prior to that, I was, um, an artist in the schools, part of the National Endowment of the Arts back in the day when there's money to bring artists into the schools around the Northwest. So I have quite a varied background. Um, but that brings me up to today. And I'm, like I said, I was so glad that the board hired me on to, uh, to be the interim principal. I'm, um, super delighted to take on the challenges of, of being a charter school principal. And I'm hoping that I can step up and meet those challenges. And I just wanna echo again, thank you. Thank you very much for making the three rooms and one office available at Whitford. I wanna, there's so many people to thank, the whole Whitford staff, um, Brian and, and the assistant principals, Rob and Tina, and the office secretary Christine, and also the people that, uh, Krista already mentioned, Paul and, uh, and also John Bridges. Thank you very much. Um, we have a, a lot of support from Beaverton. And I, and as a charter school principal from another district, I know what it's like to work with districts. And, um, and I, I have other friends who are charter school principals in other districts. So I know how much this premier district is supporting us and I'm very, very thankful for it. As mentioned, we have forty-six kindergarten students. It was a great launching. We had a soft start and got the, the children in class and it's going well. Um, we purchased our new building and now we're on two campuses, which brings a unique challenge for me that I didn't know I was gonna work on two campuses when I was hired, but now I am. And so, uh, it makes a great challenge. We have thirty-one staff members, so we have a full-time council this year. It's the first time we have a full-time counselor. And, um, just last Thursday was our, our back-to-school night and that seemed to go very well. And our test scores, um, well, the bright spot is English Language Arts, English Language Arts. And that, that went, that went well. We have, um, uh, of the children that took the test, eighty-three percent of the students passed in twenty eighteen. But, and that was better than twenty seventeen, seventy-nine percent, uh, passed in twenty seventeen. But the math scores have not improved significantly. In, in twenty eighteen, sixty-three percent of the students passed. And then twenty seventeen, fifty-five percent. Now the science really went down. So that was really a, a hard hit. And so last year, forty-six percent passed and the year before, ninety percent. I've already put some things into, into action there. And the science teacher's already feeling a lot better about how things are going. If we look at our cohort groups, um, you know, they, you know, they, they're progressing. They have shown signs of improvement in, in math. It's interesting, you know, if you watch the track sixth grade, eighth grade, they went up, um, uh, from thirty-six percent to sixty-six percent. So, um, you know, the charter schools are, have an interesting challenge because we have one teacher that teaches math at sixth, seventh, and eighth. And we have one teacher that teaches science for sixth, seventh, and eighth. And, and those small groups can really affect, um, the, the outcomes. But that's not gonna stop us on our professional development plans. The board, when I came on, asked me to do a couple of things. And, uh, so I'm gonna summarize them in four points. They wanted to improve school communication between all stakeholders. Number two, improve school-wide climate and culture. Number three, improve math instruction and student outcomes. And number four, support the teachers and staff by making targeted professional development available. Just today, I was at Northwest Regional Education Service District, uh, taking advantage of their, one of their three strands this year. And one of the strands is school climate and culture. And you don't know the size of the smile on my face. And the board said, we want you to do this professional development, but you don't have much money, Bob. And when I called up, uh, the Northwest Regional ESD and they said, well, one of the strands is school climate and culture. And so I got on board and, uh, we had a team there today of nine people, well, four, yeah, and students are people. We had nine people. We had myself, three teachers, um, classified staff, and four middle school students there, um, participating in this. And it was really exciting, um, working on that. And I think that's gonna go a long ways to help the school climate and culture to improve at, uh, at Arco Edus. And when that improves, as you know, um, student achievement improves. And so we're really working on that. The students were there. It was really great to see these middle school students who were elected by their peers to represent them at this workshop. And also to, uh, and they're, we're there at the end of the day, from two-thirty to three-fifteen, we're planning the agenda for the next staff meeting on October third. And the students are gonna help with the professional development. I mean, this is really exciting to get them involved. And math instruction, we're going to, uh, work hard with the, uh, the school improvement team on that. And, um, I'll bring directed, um, professional development. And one of the things I'm going to do with the teachers is to let them find ways for them to visit schools. Now, one thing I didn't tell you that when my wife and I moved from Eugene to Portland, I was helping her as, in her career. And that lasted for about two years. And then I started substituting in Beaverton School District. And I got to substitute a lot at, um, Aloha Uber, uh, uh, school. And so I knew Scott. And when I saw him at the principals' meeting, I said, hey, you know, you took one of our teachers, um, you know, and I had to hire someone else at the last minute. And by the way, can my teachers come up and observe your good teachers? And he said, sure. You know, so, um, I'm gonna be sending, I have one first grade teacher of mine, I'm gonna send up there to observe a model teacher, right? And then, um, I have relationships with other, other charter schools who have similar challenges where, um, one teacher has to teach lots of, of the students. And so I have, there's this excellent science teacher I know in Eugene. And our science teacher's gonna go down there and see how he makes success. So that's another form of targeted, um, professional development that doesn't cost a lot of money. And I also wanna give thanks to, um, to Tom who came, um, oh no, Todd, excuse me, Todd, who came from Teacher Source. And he's helped our, our teachers get set up on that. And they're gonna be able to use Teacher Source. And the other thing I'm doing for professional development is looking at signing up with the Association for Supervision Curriculum Development. They have a nice package for a school our size, but I don't know if I can afford the investment. So those are some of the professional development things I'm doing. And I might add, you, there's a lot of conversation about social emotional development and restorative justice. I'm gonna be honest, I was just talking to the counselor today and she's all, and I'm excited about it too, but I said, let's put the brakes on a minute here. We don't wanna just have the Christmas tree effect and have lots of things, you know, glowing, but not really doing anything right. And, but if we can get, we're gonna work in a little bit of that into our program too, but I can't promise. We're gonna go deep into, um, restorative justice because of the, the timeframe. Although I did, in, did some work, not in restorative justice, but in the, um, PDIS program. Uh, last week, I had an assembly that involved iMessages and, um, the council's wheel and things like that. So, there's a, there's a lot more to the, to the program and what we're doing. Uh, I'd be glad to take your questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Board members, any questions? Susan?
Well, first of all, I'm welcome. Um, I'm actually the school board rep to Arco Edus, so I'd love to meet up with you. So I have a couple of questions that I asked earlier to the principals and it was about attendance and testing. And I'm just wondering if, I know you're new, so I mean, you're probably diving into the statistics might, you know.
I was, one of the, um, members on our team today was Sadi. And Sadi is a classified staff who helps a lot with late and attendance issues. And so we, she talked, we talked about this today. And she says, you know, we don't really have, and I don't have the numbers to tell you, we don't have an attendance issue. We have a late-comer issue, people coming late. And so one of the goals I set out to the parents was, uh, I can't remember, I think, was it sixty late people a week? Or I think it was, something like that. I said, I need to reduce this, you know, and I gave out a message in my newsletter, can we get this down, you know, by thirty percent? Come on, let's start off with an easy goal. Let's reduce this. So we don't have a, a large issue of students, um, not attending. We have a late issue.
I was noticing something else in your report. And it's what I'm used to seeing, so, you know, even, um, so I apologize for this too. I don't see the report out in terms of diversity, like socio-economically, and did I miss that?
It's in the very first, um, it was a very general statement. And it's not written probably like you normally see it, but it's in the very first paragraph under performance report on page two. Um, it, it gives, we have several different languages spoken.
Right.
Our white population is forty-four percent, Hispanic thirty-nine percent, and the remaining seventeen percent. So it needs, and I, somewhere in the report, oh, down at the very bottom, it says, a more in-depth plan of improvement will include the forthcoming social, uh, school improvement plan. And it will be, uh, be a greater disaggregation of data on, uh, and that report's due to you on October fifteenth.
Yeah, you know, I remember reading it after the fact, so I appreciate you reminding me. It was in the beginning paragraph, but thank you. And thank you, and welcome to Beaverton.
Any other? Eric?
Totally business one. I was just looking at, um, your, uh, you gave like the P and L at the bottom, whatever. It had like the count receivable, like it ballooned up a lot. Is there any, is that a mistake in there?
Um, I'm gonna go to my colleague on my left and see if she can help me with the, uh, budget report.
I look like I went up to like a one point two million or something like that.
I have it here, Krista.
I don't have the budget.
I do have it somewhere in here. Could be a mistake. Would you just restate the question while I'm looking?
It looked like, um, two thousand seventeen versus eighteen, your, like, account receivable, like, ballooned up a lot. Went from like two hundred thousand, six point two million. Here it is. And again, I know you guys do a lot of construction and stuff too, so.
Yeah, I would say it most likely is a contribution to the grant money that we are, or not grant, but we did bond fin, bond financing for our building and received some of the funds before school ended.
Right. And I think that I asked one of the board members my first couple of days there, I said, how do we get into this building? We don't even own it yet, uh, 'cause we were getting a tour of it. And, um, was that?
That is, that it's the building purchases and bond funding.
Five hundred fifty thousand, six hundred sixty-six dollars from Heritage Checking. It's got my, it's good.
Mia?
I have a very general question. What would you say for this coming year is your biggest challenge?
Uh, communication and relationships. This is what, um, the board has asked me to do. And today I was working with, um, uh, these teacher leaders. And this is what we've, um, this is where we're focusing the art. And this is what we've, this is where we're focusing our climate and culture on, is communication and relationships. There's a diverse population of teachers from various Spanish-speaking countries, in addition, from different parts of the U.S. And so that is part of the challenge of having some common language. It's not that they are non-professional, it's that we need to help with the common language. Also, we're doing a lot as a board to extend better relationships or better communication skills with the parents. I had to make some adjustments in second grade, so I got called to a second grade meeting. I showed up, I had an agenda, and I saw the second grade parents there. And they were happy that I had this meeting. There's going to be a town hall meeting on October 11th for all parents to come. We have the normal ways of communicating, our newsletters, our board meetings, our PTO. I stand, greet parents and kids in the morning, they can talk to me. But I think that the parents really wanted even more after this, several years of, or I should say, two years of not such great communication. So communication and relationships. And that's going to extend, that relationship's going to help us with our, working with our student body too, because it's all social emotional learning.
Any other? Just because I'm curious, two questions. One, I looked through, where's your new building located?
It's on Holland Creek side of Lockup and Niss.
Okay, great.
I think the sign just went up that says, "Homer of our careers."
Great. And secondly, Chris, I just want to compliment you. I know you've gotten really involved in the Oregon School Board Association, and we see you at things and attend things. And I think that's really proactive of you as a board chair and getting your board more educated. I just wondered what is in store for finding a permanent principal?
We are bringing OSPA's executive search services in next month to our board meeting. We're going to meet with them and we plan on using them and utilizing their services to find a long-term permanent solution. We realize like this is not something we want to keep going through. It's not fun to go through multiple principals. We're just going to, it's something that the board has determined that we have to spend the money on and spend it there. I don't want to keep paying it out in the services. We'd rather just pay it upfront, get a long-term good solution and plan a place. And we hope that with the OSPA search services and just heavily utilizing those. I'm sorry I missed the OSPA training this year, but I was at the National Charter School training, a conference instead.
Well, thank you both for being here this evening, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Hope Chinese, Julie Ruckman.
Good evening. Superintendent Glaubing and the board and all of our executive directors, thank you so much for allowing us to be here. I get to be last, and I'm probably tired. I'd just like to say, I wanted to highlight a few things that we put into our report. This last year just felt like a real milestone for us because we finally launched into a middle school program. Starting off with just kindergarten and first grade that first year, and now finally having fifth and sixth graders. Had to include the fifth graders to make the program work. But it was several years in planning just that special program to be effective for the kids. It's unlike the rest of our elementary classes where they actually get to spend time with a subject-specific teacher and move around to classes. They have project-based learning electives, and they even have lockers. So they're thrilled about some of those things. We've gotten really good feedback from the parents and the teachers and the students. And that's why it was really disappointing then, at the very end of the year, that I still had such a large number of fifth graders choose to go on to other middle schools. And I know some of that is some of our highest students that are looking to join SUMA programs or going to other private schools. But then I also think, and also from my teaching experience in many years in a K to eight, it's so hard to convince parents that a K to eight is a great place to be and you don't necessarily have to go to this large middle school before high school. So I'll still work on convincing them of that. We've been really happy to have the space. I feel for Arco Rees a great deal, and I hope your construction does not go like ours did. Very delayed, but we finally got in, in fact, this year, we finally moved into our final phase three. But that's what allowed us to have the classes and computer lab for middle school. And now this year, also moved into the last classes. So that's pretty exciting. Another highlight for us was we're really feeling finally a little more stability as a school and retaining staff more, having some staff even coming back wanting to work for us again because maybe they had to leave either for visa reasons or they were starting a family, went back to school, got their masters in education, and came back as a licensed teacher. These are my Chinese teachers. So really seeking us out, wanting to be there has been really helpful and rewarding. We love consistency. Visa issues are still some of the struggle that we have in trying to keep our good teachers. And especially now that we're getting trained ones from PSU, George Fox, those are some great relationships that we're building with them, having student teachers come in and work with us as well. Another highlight of our school has been relationships with our students in special programs that they're able to participate in. We hosted 17 students from Suzhou, China, that came and stayed with some of our families. And then some of our students went there to some of those same families and stayed with them around spring break. So that's a special learning experience that our fifth graders are participating in. We have special programs like our chess team. They took number one in state. I feel like we're creating kind of a math culture there where it's really cool to like math. And that, we have over 30 kids now participating in math club after school too. So between math and chess, it creates a good environment there for continued growth. It's always also been a focus of our school to, PBIS has been really strong there, and I still credit Chris Borgmeyer, professor at PSU, for helping us get started. And he's still a part of it, does the training with our staff every year. We're going even a little deeper this year. Every year I choose a theme, and last year it was some of the basic characteristics like of having grit and integrity, empathy, self-control, and embracing diversity. And the kids really latched on to that. This year, we're really looking at peer-to-peer relationships and focusing on that. And we have a part-time counselor that is on board with us now. She just started today. And I inundated her right away with an assembly with the kids. So we're really looking forward to working with her and making that more specific for all of the kids to be successful. So, and then just a week and a half ago, I was able to attend the Oregon-China Conference at Portland State University. I was asked to present there as part of their cultural studies and was able to really show them the development of our school and the triumphs and challenges that we've had. And others had a lot of questions about that. It was a great conference to get a more global perspective of where relationships are with United States and China. I mean, you know where some of that is economically, hearing on the news. And it seems like kind of a storm cloud for us looking forward. But I actually came away with a real sense of what we're doing is so important in developing those cultural and language skills because our kids are going to be the ones that are going to pave the way and build those positive relationships between our countries in the future. So it was a really great opportunity. We left there and they gave us an educational leadership award for our school in working with Confucius Institute. So it was a really positive experience.
Thank you. Board members, any questions?
I'll ask a similar question. So how is the attendance at your school? Do kids, are kids attending at a pretty regular rate? Or do you have issues with attendance at your school?
So we do have regular attendance. We don't have a lot of big issues with that. But there's still, like I heard from some of the other schools, we also have families that are, that like to travel and will be gone for greater lengths of time than you might allow for, say, Christmas break or spring break. We do try to provide as best we can some supplemental work that they can do, if they can do that while they're there. Or try to find some alternative assignment. For example, if they are going to China or to Japan, to keep some kind of journal and come back and report to the rest of the class. It's just building more of the reading and writing, cultural development as well. And trying to keep up with some math while they're gone, but that's about it.
Eric?
You kind of touched on it, but how do you battle that middle school draw? You know, you're experiencing, you know, if you're your goal to get six, seven, eight and really have it, you know, robust and have enough people. So what's your strategy on that?
One of the things that we found out from the kids that they really appreciate is some shifts that we make as they move on to middle school in treating them like they are maturing students. For example, we have, like I've said, we're a PBIS school, and we have our regular rewards and wisdom seeker cards that the kids earn. But then when they get to middle school, we're shifting to a system, it's called Classcraft, if anyone else knows about this. It's an online avatar type of reward system where the kids get to interact with that. They work in teams, actually. They can earn points and heal their classmates if they lose points for something. So that's a benefit for behavior and for just motivation. And then the electives, we don't have a full-time music teacher or an art teacher or anything. So that's where we can bring some of that in. One of my new English teachers in middle school is also a music teacher himself. So he's teaching an elective on choir. And we have another teacher who is really talented with art, and she's doing an elective on art. So we're giving, trying to give the kids more choices as well. What we heard the most from parents in our parent survey and feedback was concern about tag, that we're not doing enough for the talented and gifted students. And I really want to say, I think our whole school is talented and gifted just by how they teach Chinese and English at the same time. But I know they're just always pushing, you know, to look for more. So we're trying to, you know, give an answer to that. My answer first is always just differentiating in the classroom, trying to provide those supports and the proper challenge for everyone. It's just tough. So I think those are the main things we're trying to do.
Any other? I think the reason you didn't get as many questions for us, it's a very thorough report. And thank you so much. You provided us a lot of good information and we really appreciate you being here this evening. So thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. So we're running just a bit behind. So I think what I'm going to do is go ahead and call a break right now. So if we can be back here at 8:25 to finish up the evening, I appreciate it.
All right, here we go. Career and technical education report. John?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Just as an advisory here, I'm here to talk about career technical education, but I also have the high school success team here. I have Jean Weir and Randy Clark, dynamic duo with me. And I'm open to talking about anything high school success as well. Some of you guys have some questions about ninth grade on track, BSD Flex, industry partners, passages, grad mentors, any of that, still can gain, because I have experts with me that help me answer those questions. So as you see from my report, we, over the last two years, added 15 new programs. So super excited and grateful for Major 98 funds, which allow us to do that. But at the same time, we want to emphasize that we want, we definitely want to meet the demand of the students and add programs, but we're equally concerned with making sure our programs are high-quality programs as well. And so we're spending a lot of time on making sure we're doing the best we can in those programs to meet what the industry partners want from us and what we think our kids need moving to the next level. So with that, I'm going to just open it up to questions.
Any questions? Susan?
Of course.
Wow. So John, I mean, I noticed that most high schools have quite a few CTE paths, but there's a couple that just have three, Sunset being one of them. And I don't know what TAN is.
Terranova.
Terranova, okay. I shouldn't have that. And I know ISB is not on there because they have no CTE at all, right?
Correct.
Are they ever going to have the opportunity to have a path to CTE?
Being an option school, we haven't really explored that. I mean, if someone would present a compelling case for it, we would be open to listening to it for sure.
So I have one question that hit me earlier this evening about a kid, a child, a student who wants to, let's say, do the education path and that's at Aloha or Beaverton, but they're going to, let's say, Westview or something like that. Inaccessibility to get to those schools might be hard. How do we help those kids out?
Well, yes, it's a challenge schedule-wise and transportation-wise for sure. We try to build programs at the schools where there's interest and staff talent in that areas. And so those programs are created with that in mind. But we do have cases where kids see a program elsewhere and try to fit it into their schedule. We're hopeful, just to add a little plug here, that with the creation of BSD Flex, our online option for credits, that may, perhaps a student could pick up a credit in an alternative way with a different timing. And they'll maybe get one out of the way, knowing that they're going to make room for one of these programs later in their, in their schedule. So, and we've had students do that in the past as well.
I'd say, I heard at one of my high schools, that that was actually an obstacle for a kid that would be perfect for going to Aloha for the automobile CTE program, but because they couldn't get the right classes at the right time, they couldn't take, they couldn't fit the CTE program, so.
Susan, I would also add, any programs that we have as an option that John was talking about, that are official options, we provide less than to those schools.
At a certain time, Carl, so like they have to get there at a certain time?
Yes, because they're designated by periods. And so, for example, Health Careers, you'll have students from Westview and from Sunset to go certain periods. So we will transport over and transport back, I think, for Aloha and any of the others.
Leanne?
I have a fun question. So if the governor and the legislature were to fully fund Measure 98, what would you do with it?
Oh, I'll actually let you guys chime in for this. We, again, we, we're caution against just expanding. We probably focus on existing programs and making sure those are top-notch and investing more in equipment and facilities to keep those programs up to date and running.
Well, we are having to be really creative with AutoTech program on the rebuild. All the estimates that have come out have been from the cost estimators somewhat inflated, but by design because of the instability in the market. And so we are really being creative, trying to keep with the ideal of having an AutoTech program that is like a service station, so that it has a service write-up desk and have a drive-through so that cars could come in. So eventually we have cars coming through that are actually being serviced by our students. And then in turn, that whatever funds created, generated from that would go into the program. But aside from that, we also have our ninth grade on track that could use some attention, I would say, fundings, a funding for training. We have been able to put some funding towards ninth grade on track and our grad mentors. But also, we're starting a mental health consortium, a Beaverton School District Mental Health Consortium in collaboration with other districts. And part of that work is to look at some of our, how we're addressing mental health, the mental health systems that we have, and the the mental health systems that we have, and the school district systems that we have, and how can we better align that. So there are other areas of high school success funding that I would kind of lean towards, and also I would expand the construction program at Westview like crazy with the extra funding.
I think an associated question to Leanne's is, how do we feel like we're keeping up with the demand that students have for elective choice, especially as it pertains to CTE?
Well, I mean, in our area, the real focus and all of the information that comes back to us is that our region is demanding, like, construction and health careers and manufacturing and IT, and those are the big areas. And in some areas, we have CTE and film and media and some fun things for students. So I think the real question is, do we want to expand opportunities for students through electives, which is possible, that's not tethered to CTE, which gives a little bit more flexibility? Because once it, because the CTE pot is the CTE pot, whether it's Perkins or Pathway Funding or High School Success, and High School Success has other people looking towards that funding to help decrease dropout rate and increase grad rate outside of CTE. So the pot remains the same size. So it's really looking at the CTE programs that we have, and if there is a CTE program that is, that could possibly be an elective because it doesn't have the flexibility an elective might have, then it's possible that it could be just an elective. That's the, that's the real question. Should we have more CTE or should we have more electives?
And we have expanded Health Careers, our very popular Health Careers program, added some more students to slots last year, and same thing with automotive. How many do we have, two Health Careers?
We added 32 slots last year.
Thirty-two slots?
For this school year.
I guess the question I really had was, we're not keeping up with demand for elective slash CTE yet, are we? Or are we?
I think we're doing pretty good. We don't hear from principals about certain areas in which they're demanding that, and certainly their forecasting. Obviously, they can't forecast for something's not there, so that's kind of a hole we don't know, but perhaps some surveying in that area would be a good thing to go after.
Donna?
I just know I'm always so very proud to be from the Beaverton School District, and just looking at all this is just so awesome. And so I just wonder, how do we stack up or compare with other school districts? I know when I've talked to some parents from other school districts, they say, Beaverton seems to have a whole host of career and technology offerings compared to my school district, but could you just, do you know, do you have a sense of, we're like at the top, we're in the middle? How are we in this state?
I'll let you ask. My sense is we're somewhere in the middle with higher aspirations for sure.
Hillsborough, for example, has 32 programs, or 34 programs to study. We, I think we're up to 32. But Portland Public has like 65, so that's a lot. There's 800 programs to study in the whole of the state, but the flip side of that is that there's a great deal of pressure on industry and industry partners, which when you're CTE, that's critical that you have that industry partnership. So industry is kind of getting weird, like, I don't want to say weary, but we have to be careful about, you know, how we're creating our programs of study to make sure that it's also aligned with, alignment with our regional demands in terms of our workforce, so just kind of be inclever about it rather than just build for the sake of building, so.
Well, thank you. I didn't know there was 800. My. Any other?
Yeah. I'm just thinking down the road here about statistics, and I'm wondering, are you guys keeping track of what happens to the students after they leave these programs, and how many of them are going out into the industries that we're setting them up for and getting those living wage jobs that we're trying to position our students for?
That is one of the performance measures that's required for a program of study, in addition to the math skills or the reading skills, but their placement beyond high school is one of the mandatorys. So they collect data on whether the kids went to a four-year or a two-year or some kind of other training opportunity or school related too. I can't remember our specific number off the top of my head, but I know it's one of the areas that we're exceeding the state's benchmark on, so our kids are going off into something beyond after they graduate, so.
No, you're talking about, like, further education. Do you track all the way into industry placement?
We don't track all the way to industry placement, yeah. Nobody really does. It's really hard. As a state, we've had those conversations, but it's a very difficult, something to try to follow them all the way through. There isn't even really a great way to find out what happens to them once they get even to an Oregon university, so then to track them all the way beyond into the workforce is really challenging. It'd probably come back to, could we create a system, but...
That's a good question.
Yeah.
Because I'm thinking about how we close that loop with industry and show them, hey, what we're doing here at our school matters so much, and it comes all the way back around to you guys, especially when we're advocating for more money for our schools, when we're out there trying to show our work to our private industry partners, that kind of data would be extremely valuable.
Just a little preview, though. In a related note, we've been kind of brainstorming a way to highlight some of our graduates from Beaverton have gone into, went through one of our pathways into a location, and going to make some videos on that and highlight what they've done and how it just prepared them for that next step, so watch for a video machine in your hand.
I just have two questions. Janine, you addressed one of them. I was wondering about where we were with those partnerships, because I know how valuable those partnerships are, and it can get very easy that you tap out, you know, these folks when they're doing more than their fair share. My second part of that was, do we, are we having any difficulty finding the qualified instructors to address all of these, all of these needs?
I would say yes, especially, certain areas are hard. Computer science is very, very hard, because financially it's hard to get someone with that kind of experience to leave a technology-related field to come and teach, and, or if someone who has a teaching degree, which there are, last year there were no computer science educators in the state of Oregon, so no one was pursuing that as in to become a teacher in computer science. So it's really hard to find someone, and then they need industry experience to be able to teach in the CTE program, and so finding those in computer science is really hard. Health is also, the health science programs are also fairly difficult. Other programs seem to be a little easier. Business teachers seem to be a little easier. The education programs seem to be a little bit easier, but, yeah, so there are certain areas that definitely we struggle more.
Do we have a plan at all, or some kind of action plan of how we can perhaps groom some of those folks in the future, or offer more money?
It's a statewide issue, and there's, at the state level, there's competition.
And then my next, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, we have, I mentioned the exhaustion with the industry partners, but our plan is, I've begun to work with Workforce and Work Systems, Andrew McLaughlin, and his team has been helping establish a industry board that's going to help guide our CTE and specifically for the Westview development of the construction program. We're looking at apprenticeship programs across the district and some of our construction industry partners, so rather than spread it thin, we're actually working and teaming together, our school district, and have them guide this program of study to help guide us through that. And also, I met with our High School Success Team down in Salem, and one of the things that they asked the district to do was form an industry panel at the district level that comes from our, comes from different areas of CTE to help us look at our CTE in the district. And so that's the strategies to really target industry partners in a way that, instead of being like, asking them to be on another committee, it's actually a work group to address the concerns that we have, both in the district and in our, in our workforce development.
Just one more. I know a lot of these are new, so there won't be any, but do we have a specific sort of metrics or data that we can show that if a student is in one of these, how their attendance is, or how we know that they are completing graduation? Is there going to be some kind of statistic, you know, data that we're going to be able to show that, that these are making a difference in those areas?
Yes, we have data and metrics for those particular areas. We have them for even down to academic success compared to non-pathway students as well, so.
That's a requirement of Perkins and OD, isn't it, Randy? I mean, you have to report on that every year, so that information's out there.
Remember, track the attendance part specifically, but all of the other measures, yes.
Because we are promoting this attendance, we know that we hear from students that if there's a hook, that there's a reason for them to show up every day, a lot of times it is those, so I just think that would be an interesting metric to pursue, we could.
Just, just real quick, and one of the board's goals is to find long-term solutions to diversifying our workforce, building teachers that mirror student population more, and so we plan to develop that area. I know, I've been talking with Sue Robertson, she's excited. We have some programs kind of headed that way, but to fully refine them because there's going to be an absolute shortage. And just to let you know, if Portland Public and Beaverton and Salem, we can actually take every teacher that comes out of any Oregon school teacher prep program, just those three districts, so there's, there's not enough. And as early childhood develops, education develops, you can actually create some career pathways for that. And to answer your question, Leanne, what would you do or could you do with the money in Measure 98? You can take some of that money, a percentage, and Mr. Williams will help me, because he gave me the percentage the other day. You can take a percentage of that money and you could push it down into, I believe it's the eighth grade.
Fifteen percent?
Fifteen percent, and I think they're looking at, there may be some adjustments in the legislature to look at even down in other middle schools. So I think there's lots of, I, they won't have problems spending the money, but if it's, if it's fully funded, that's, I believe that's an additional $300 million that will come in. And for every $100 million, I believe, additional, total, yeah, yeah. But it would be an additional, I'm trying to think, probably somewhere around $2 million for us, I'm guessing.
$100 million is something.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much. It's been exciting times, and thank you for the great report, and we look forward to hearing how the new programs are working out. Thanks. Financial update?
So you've all received the August financial... It's your button, no. It's green. Oh, no, sorry. You've all received your financial packet for review, and we've had our first payroll for August, which include a full certified administrative and full-time classified payroll, but we won't have the entire district payroll through until the September packet comes out. We have had payroll, but we haven't had a chance to analyze any of that yet. Enrollment estimates are fairly flat. We are up approximately 51 students net, which is pretty negligible, and as Don said, our ELL students are down about 400, so that's a half weighting of about 200 students that we won't get funding for. We have allocated all of our local option letting teachers out, so that's good news. We've pushed those out to make sure that we have good class sizes. And I was requested by Ann Brian to refresh why our budgeted end income balance for '17, '18 was less than, or that the budget was more than what we actually wound up with as our end income balance. When we do our, our estimates in February and March, it's that, it's an estimate, and we had anticipated a little bit more revenue coming in from the state in the May payment because we always get a bigger May payment than we're estimating, so that was part of, part of that. The other part of it was that we had year-end salary and benefit expenditures that were more than we had anticipated due to a couple of different factors. One of them is, is year-end sub-usage and one-time pay. So as, as certain initiatives are happening at the end of the year, we're never sure exactly when they're going to come in, and that was, that was a big part of what happened. Are there any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Title IX report, David?
So you have in your board packet the third sort of status update of our work around reviewing our practices for Title IX compliance as it relates to school athletics, and I'm happy to answer questions about that. I, I mean, we embarked on this work when Don asked me to take over this role for the district, and it's, it's been quite intriguing to dive into, and frankly, I've been really surprised at the level of compliance that does exist in our high schools. You know, Title IX is a, when it comes to athletics, is a rather complicated task to say, boom, stamp your compliant, really comparing whether you are providing true equal benefits to boys and girls out of school, where on first test, as I talk about in my update, on first test, your participation rates are not commensurate with the school population, it becomes a rather complicated task because you can't simply compare one female sport to one male sport and say, are they equal? You compare all athletic opportunities for girls and all athletic opportunities for boys, you weigh them in their entirety and determine whether or not they are equal benefits and opportunities. That being said, I do think it's incumbent on us to try to find those places where inequality would appear to exist and to try to root those out. One of the most common is obviously in the areas of baseball and softball, because they are very gender-specific facilities and very gender-specific sports, so it's an obvious place for, for community members to look and, and see where disparities exist. And I think for the most part, where there have been any minor inequalities, those have been rectified and cleaned up when it comes to things like scheduling alignment and game times, usage of various facilities we have around the district. I think even our varsity softball facilities compared to our varsity baseball fields are actually, for the most part, I think the boys might actually have a case that their facilities are still in another park. Now that being said, again, I go back to, it is the entirety of male athletics compared to the entirety of female athletics that you compare, not one sport to another. So I think we have seen, for the most part, substantial compliance, but rather than stamp the work as being done, I think this is just an ongoing practice that we have to institutionalize. And that's really what I focused on here, is looking at the next 12 to 18 months to talk about, what are the systems we can implement to make sure that we are constantly reviewing our practice and making sure that there isn't, I think, legitimately inadvertent inequality arising. You know, coaches and, and teams really look out for themselves in the environment we operate in in schools, and so that is generally how you're going to find yourself out of compliance, is one team just doing more for themselves than another. Of course, the Title IX would say that it, that that's not, that's not a reason for inequality to exist, so we need to find a way to increase that. The one outstanding area I think we still have to work on is, and I do note that, is in some of our facilities, specifically the restrooms at, locker rooms at Southridge and Westview High Schools are structurally unequal. And so we have rectified that temporarily by closing off some of the teen rooms in the male locker rooms and just turn them into general athletic storage so as to equalize, but I think we need to look at alternative ways to utilize those facilities. Our goal in Title IX compliance should never be one of reduction. We don't want to be taking anything away from anybody. We want to be adding to the program overall. So that's the next step in something like that, is looking for ways we can either incorporate that into potential future bond offerings or any other funding sources that may arise to be able to reconfigure or add space to provide equal benefits for boys and girls. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Susan?
David, I have a question about the definition entirety. Because, I mean, I just remember a few years ago that softball was way out of whack, and we made adjustments to that, but it was a Title IX issue, and they did address it. But the way you're defining it, if the entirety of the athletic programs worked out okay, then we might not have had to address...
Yeah, I mean, so in pure Title IX compliance terms, you have two really big pieces, and I described them in here. The one is sort of equal opportunity, and that's the three-part test I talk about. And generally, because of football, most school districts don't, most schools, because it's a school-based piece, most schools don't have participation commensurate to the student population when it comes to just numbers of kids. Therefore, you go to the number two and number three test. And for us, the number three is really making sure you're meeting the interests and abilities of your students, and that's where we talk about doing a survey and finding out what is desire that's not being offered, right? So then the other part of compliance is what they call the sort of laundry list items. And that's where you get into facilities, right? And ensuring that the benefits being provided to our female athletes are equal to the benefits being provided to our male athletes. So that doesn't necessarily mean the same number of things, because you might have unequal participation rates, but it does mean equal quality and value being provided to the entirety of programs. So for instance, it's entirely possible that as a district, perhaps we are going to invest way more heavily into, I don't know, volleyball and under-invest in softball, but we're going to then go over here, we're going to invest way more in boys soccer and then under-invest in something else, right? So you're going to look at the entire buckets. You're essentially filling a bucket for boys and a bucket for girls, and those need to be of equal value and benefit to the athletes. Again, as I've said, I think the problem that districts run into and schools run into, not the problem, is just that there are certain things that are more visible to the community. So when it comes to receiving complaints or trying to ensure compliance, it is often a far easier task for us to say, particularly when it comes to baseball and softball, let's just make sure they have roughly equal facilities and opportunities, because it's very obvious when they're unequal, right?
Leanne?
I have a question about when a community member chooses to donate a large sum of money for their particular love of a particular sport, be it a male sport or a female sport. Has the district looked in general what they're going to do with that moving forward in terms of compliance with Title IX?
Well, moving forward, moving backwards doesn't matter. The federal law doesn't really care where the money comes from. It has to be, we have to provide equal benefits. And that can be accommodated in a number of ways. Obviously, football is often a significant beneficiary of voluntary contributions. And the district, let's say a generous donor is willing to buy brand-new uniform sets for football team every year, it would be incumbent on us to make sure that we're providing an equal benefit to female athletes, providing new uniforms every year, regardless of the revenue source. Often, what you see, and I can't speak to a specific instance, but investments in facilities. An investment in a district stadium, however, can be described as providing an equal benefit because it's a multi-use field that's being offered to multiple sports and multiple genders. Unlike, say, an investment directly in a new baseball field, you know, we're going to go to ALOA and we're going to build a new baseball field and turf the whole thing and not do anything to softball, that will create a significant inequality between those two sports. Again, we go back to the very, the visual nature of those two sports, right? I do think that the question of fundraising, specific to athletics and Title IX, is not necessarily, I wouldn't say it's one we need to grapple with, because I think everybody is very acutely aware of this, the fact that no matter what the funding source is, we have to provide equal benefits. So if funding source takes us out of equality, we need to bring it back. I do, just in the soapbox, I think general fundraising across the district, I think that there are other, once you pull that string, it leads us down other paths for equity and equality of fundraising that are not necessarily Title IX related.
So follow-up, just, it could easily happen, in my mind, that we could become out of balance, because certain things happen often this corner of the district, and will there be a clearinghouse for those, or are you leaving that up to your high school ADs, their principals? I'm just curious, the bigger picture ones where a huge stadium gets donated, I understand, those are going to be, but there's a lot of, I'm going to outfit you, anyway, I'm just curious if there's...
So a couple of clarifying points. One, that Title IX does not require equal opportunities between schools. Title IX is school-site specific, okay? So that is an important piece to remember. I think as a district, I think we have a high degree of valuing equality amongst our schools, but that is not a Title IX piece. Title IX would be agnostic to the fact that you have a greater fundraising ability at a Sunset High School versus a Fennello High School. That would not be a Title IX problem. To the Title IX specific, where teams are fundraising, or coaches are raising, or ADs are raising on a local level, that might take us out of compliance. I think that's why the ongoing work is much more critical, right? Finding a way to regularly survey our coaches, get that ground floor feedback, regularly survey our athletes to find out what their perception is on the local level, that's where you're going to just continue to get that feedback. It's, this is way more important than, say, a fence code in an urban code, but a fence code is, you're found to be in compliance because people find places out of compliance and complain about them, or make you aware of it, or you drive by it. And so I think it's incumbent on us to just make sure we're sort of being vigilant about those situations.
Leanne?
I'm curious if you can help us just clarify a little bit about the definition of equal benefit. Is it really measuring equal amount of resources, or is it really, you know, I guess the thing that's generating the question for me is, you know, no matter what you do, a football uniform is going to cost more than a volleyball uniform. How do we start to measure and identify what equal benefit looks like?
Yeah, that's a great question. And it's not, that's a good example where it's not the dollar amount, it's what is needed for that activity, right? So to my example, if we're providing the football team new pads and uniforms and helmets every year, we should be providing the volleyball team and the softball team new gear every year. It doesn't have to be the same dollar amount, it has to be the same benefit value to that sport, right? Cross-country use is a lot less stuff. Yeah, that's why it's no-cut sports.
So I got a question about the overlap between Title IX compliance and then also what inequities might exist in the district, right? Because we have Title IX compliance over here, which is very specific, and then there's what community members are seeing and what the inequities are. If I were to kind of overlay those things like a Venn diagram, right, what are those areas that are not congruent with Title IX compliance that might be inequities that people will see out of the district?
Well, the fact that we have schools with turf fields and schools with dirt fields is an inequality that has nothing to do with Title IX.
Okay. And is that one of the major things that you've heard about as you've done this research? Like, what are some of the things?
That, and then I just, I think the unequal ability to raise money voluntarily.
Okay.
Between schools.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other superintendent?
Just to let the board know that both David and I, we meet with the athletic directors on a monthly basis, and it is, you know, we are implementing change, and change is not well-received sometimes when we're talking about some of these issues, but we're meeting with them. I know, David, when we talk about fundraising, there's a webinar coming on that Karen Moskin is putting on, specific to fundraising, and we're signed up for that. What I can tell you, Beaverton is not perfect, but I think we are being looked at as really making some progress towards trying to address some of these issues. But these are some deep cultural embedded issues that are coming up. Just as, I asked David, my son's an athletic director down in Southern, and the, one of their teams raises money to go to Hawaii every year, and fundraises money to go to Hawaii, and now it's become an issue in that district. Why don't the girls get to go to Hawaii? Because they can't raise the funds, and so it's becoming a Title IX issue. So I think people are, it's starting to, you know, it's been really prevalent at the college level, and now it's starting to really come down in the high schools.
Yeah, I'd make sure to tell the athletic directors every month, please don't discriminate against people. But I want to leave you with a really key tension point here, because I think it is important when we talk about what goes on in our athletic programs, and specifically sport to sport, not necessarily just male to female, but it's important as it relates to Title IX. Often, you know, we get concerns about when practices are scheduled. You know, a male sport with a coach that is scheduling practices right when school looks out, versus a coach of a female sport who has a different day job, who can't get there till 5:30. And often, the comment back to us, well, that, I mean, come on, that's where the coach wants to be. And of course, Title IX would say, we're the ones who hire the coach. Therefore, it's on us to make sure that we're providing female athletes with an equal opportunity to our male athletes. And if we're hiring coaches that are not as aggressive with fundraising as our male coaches of our males teams are, if we're hiring coaches for female teams that want to schedule practice times that are more convenient for them compared to the coaches we're hiring for men's athletics, then it's incumbent on us to rectify that problem. It's not, that's an adult problem that we have to fix so that the kids have equal benefits and opportunities.
Okay, any other questions? David, thank you for that very thorough, and just stay where you are.
Yep.
Now, we've got the discussion items. I bet you guys didn't know we were already reviewing the discussion items. And we have the first reading of our board policies. Okay, you have the first reading in front of you. Does anybody have any questions of this illustrious group here? Do you want to ask it for the record, or?
My question was about the sexual harassment policy, DBN, JBA. I just wanted to make sure that social media was covered someplace in our policies.
Yeah, and I let Susan know that we do cover social media, cyberbullying, interactions in our housing harassment, intimidation, and bullying policy, which is JFCF for students and GBNA for South.
Any other questions about the first reading policies? All right, thank you very much. Good job. All right, next up is real estate. Mr. Sparks?
Good evening, for the record, Steven Sparks, executive administrator for long-range planning, and I would like for you to know that ALOA High School will be hosting the Nike Portland XC over at Portland Meadows, and we have 5,390 athletes showing up to the event this year. So you're welcome to come.
When is that?
Saturday, first race starts at 8 o'clock.
Wow, this Saturday?
And we have 19 races. So to move on from more important things to real estate, we have two items before you tonight. One is for a property on Second Street, just east of Beaverton High School. I believe the address is 1-855, 1285 Southwest Second Street. And this is a 5,000-square-foot parcel that was acquired in 2010, and we're asking that you declare that a property surplus. We have a buyer who would like to assemble property on that block to construct an affordable housing project. The other item is a lotline adjustment up at Bonnie Slope Elementary School, where part of the property that we're adjusting would go to THPRD in exchange for THPRD building all of the trail that is, that will be done here in the coming months. And with that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Leanne?
I move that we declare the district property located at 12855 Southwest Second Street as surplus, and authorize the superintendent or designate to execute appropriate documents to transfer the ownership of the surplus property to reach CDC.
I second. All right, it's been properly moved and seconded that we declare the district property appropriate for transfer. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, calling the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Leanne?
I move that we declare the district property located at 11775 Northwest McDaniel Road as surplus, and authorize the superintendent or designate to execute appropriate documents to file a property line adjustment with Washington County and transfer ownership of the surplus property to THPRD.
I second. It's been properly moved and seconded that we file the documents to file a property line adjustment with Washington County and transfer ownership of the surplus property to THPRD. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Thank you, Mr. Sparks. Leanne?
I move that we approve the consent agenda. Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, calling the question. All those in favor signify by saying none.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, individual board comments. Do you have any individual board comments this evening? Susan?
I had two very fun things that I did on Friday that I wanted to share. One was at Montclair. Montclair had a peace poll, that's too hard for me to say, on International Peace Day, and I was invited to participate, and it was great to see the kids get excited about it. It was a wonderful experience, and I love being around young kids, I must say. The other one was at Southbridge High School. David and his clinic invited the middle schools that feed into Southbridge, the elementary schools that feed into Southbridge, to have a conversation on how to build from really pre-K up to 12th grade community and, you know, all kinds of collaboration between the schools to move the dial. So I was really excited to be part of the conversation, and I know that the plan is to meet again in December with those schools. So I think that David's done some really good things to bring his schools together in that way. Thanks.
Any other? Leanne?
I just want to reiterate what Superintendent Grodding said about some of the committees that he and I are serving on for revenue reform, and I will be continually bringing that before your attention. I know I'm preaching to the choir, but I feel like the time is right, and we have to get our message out, and anytime I can publicly declare that we need to call for more school funding and revenue reform at the state, I will do that. So just wanted to bring that forward again.
Leanne?
I wanted to take the opportunity to thank some of our fellow board members for the public work that they've been doing on that issue recently with their editorial letters and other efforts to move forward on the significant agenda. So I know that's the proprietor of the chair. Thank you very much. So I know that's the privater of the chair, but thank you very much for the work that you're doing.
Tom?
Just wanted to report, we had our first community engagement subcommittee meeting today, and it was great. We're off to a great start in building a list of different groups that we want to engage and go out to over the next year, and I'm really excited about that. Also, we have a great report here leading with race. They came out from the community, a coalition of communities of color, and we've got copies for the whole board, because we felt this was so important, it shouldn't just be in the subcommittee, it should be something they share with everybody. It talks about a lot of subgroups in our community, and these are some of the groups that we're going to be trying to reach out to over the next year. So I got a copy here, I'll just pass it around for everybody, and I got a PDF copy. So yeah, well, we're excited, and I'm sure we'll have lots more to report in the coming year. Also, got a chance to tour Virginia Garcia, and if anybody on the board hasn't done that yet, it is inspiring how the new facility, how big it is, and how much capacity it has for the community, and I'm so excited, and I hope to see those services utilized by our students and parents and members of our community.
I just wanted to add, if you want to read the full report, it's like 300 and some-odd pages, it's really interesting, and you can find that online as well, under the Coalition of Communities of Color. Leanne? And I'd just like to say a couple items. Last week, I got to attend Hyten, a fifth-grade teacher there, Tom Styer, was honored as a leader in learning by KATU. And anybody that knows Mr. Styer at Hyten, he's a great individual, and he's been there a long, long time, and he's quite a character. And so that was great to be able to acknowledge all of his years of service and to be there at Hyten. And secondly, I went to the first principal's coffee at Mountainside on, this last Friday. 9:00 on a Friday morning, there were 31 parents there, 31 engaged with lots of questions parents. And it was just amazing to see a brand-new school like this just so engaged. So that was interesting. And this coming Friday is the big memorial game where Southridge honors veterans. I encourage all of you, it's red, white, and blue, it's a wonderful, wonderful ceremony, there's flags everywhere, it's a beautiful stadium, and the memorial game, it will be Southridge versus Mountainside. So we will definitely see, this will be where my first-time test as a divided board member. So anyway, I encourage all of you, if you don't have anything to do on Friday night, to do that. So with that, any closing comments, Superintendent?
I have none.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody, for staying a little bit late. We ended early last time, so I hope it all equaled out this time. But this concludes our business meeting for tonight. Our next meeting will be a work session on Monday, October 8th, at 3:00 at Merle Station Community High School, and with that, the meeting is adjourned.